Please remain standing for the invocation. As June marks the beginning of the summer season, it also is the culmination of over a decade of education and in some cases even hard work and self-discipline for our community's wonderful graduating classes. As our schools graduates begin to spread their wings, we dedicate this evening's invocation to them, their parents and their educators, teachers and administrators alike. Ralph Waldo Emerson wrote in one of his essays, "Do not go where the path may lead; go instead where there is no path and leave a trail." Let us pray that our graduating class takes heed of this advice and in ever more rapidly changing world they look for new ways to solve the problems they have inherited. Let us pray that they do not make the same mistakes as their predecessors. Let us also give thanks to the wonderful parents and teachers and administrators with whom we as a city have been blessed. Our schools and their denizens are truly a jewel in our city's crown and deserve our praise and gratitude. We also pray for those young men and women who after graduating enlisted in our armed services and are currently deployed. We pray for peace and compassion today and always. Amen.
May we have your report?
The agenda for the June 10th, 2014 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Thursday, June 5th, 2014, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
For those of you who are wondering, the mayor is out of town. The Mayor Pro Tem is out of town. And I guess I'm next in line, so I'm Mayor Mayor Pro Tem for today. Thank you. May I have the next item?
Next item under presentation and appointments at 3:00 A is Agenda preview for the meetings of Tuesday, June 17th, 2014.
Mr. Beers.
Mayor Pro Tem Weaver, for June 17th, we have no business agenda items for the Glendale Housing Authority. That afternoon, we do have a special meeting of the Glendale Successor Agency, and we have two items, Director of Economic Development, this is regarding the Alex Theater, 2013-14, second and third quarterly reports from the Glendale Arts and a ward of bid for the exterior painting of the building. Secondly, we have Director of Economic Development regarding professional services for property management and property acquisition services for the Glendale Successor Agency. That evening for the council meeting to commence at 6:00 PM, we have a number of consent items, Director of Economic Development, appropriation of funds for financial analysis under the city's professional services agreement with Kaiser Marston Associates. General Manager of Glendale Water and Power, this is regarding the public benefit program and budgets for fiscal year 1415 and fiscal year 1516. General Manager of Glendale Water and Power, this is regarding the E Tag information for Glendale Water and Power. General Manager of Glendale Water and Power, professional services in support of Openway Collection Engine 3.9 and operational reporting services, and it's an upgrade. General Manager of Glendale Water and Power, Magnolia Power Plant Project, this is a resolution authorizing the city's use of allowance for the value that we receive. General Manager of Glendale Water and Power, revision of the Glendale Water and Power Energy Risk Management Policy. We then turn to Director of Public Works, Next Bus Real-Time Passenger Information System for the city's Beeline Transit Service. Director of Public Works and Community Services in Parks, this is regarding the Palmer Park and Pacific Park Playground Equipment Replacement Project. Director of Public Works, Public Works Facilities Management Building Maintenance Contracts, and this is for window washing of our facilities. Director of Public Works regarding parking citation processing and delinquent collection and preferential parking permit process. We have two items under action, General Manager of Glendale Water and Power, this is regarding the GWP Annual Authority for the Purchase or Sale of Energy Services. And secondly, General Manager of Glendale Water and Power, Emergency Repairs to Unit Three at the Grayson Power Plant. And lastly, we have a hearing. Director of Public Works, this is regarding a levy and collection of annual assessments of the North San Fernando Road Corridor Landscape Maintenance District, and this is for fiscal year 1415. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. What is next?
Next is a proclamation designating the week of June 14th, 2014 as Flag Week.
Thank you. Vito, want to come up? I'll read the proclamation. And it's, "Whereas Flag Week, June 15th to 21st, 2014, was established by an act of Congress in 1966, as a 21-day period during which our flag should be especially honored and displayed. And whereas by our flag's display, we reaffirm our allegiance to the principles for which it stands, honor those men and women who have served under it in protecting our nation from those who have attempted to destroy our freedom. And whereas the flag continues to stand as a symbol of hope and opportunity to those of foreign birth who have become citizens of our country, now therefore I, Zarri Sinanian, Mayor of the City of Glendale, do hereby proclaim the week of June 15th to the 21st, 2014, as Flag Week, and urge all residents to honor America by displaying our flag during this time." And before I come down, as some of you may know, Vito is the one that caused the Congress of the United States to honor the flag with Flag Week. And it's this Saturday at 9:00, there'll be a Flag Day and Flag Week ceremony at the Vietnam Memorial at the corner of Orange Grove, Oceanside, and Honolulu. So you're welcome to come up there, commemorate what Vito started all on his own in little old Glendale, California.
Actually, it was Montrose. Montrose is the home of Flag Week, actually, for everybody to know.
The main leader.
I'd like to thank the Glendale City Council for issuing this proclamation, making the week of June 14 Flag Week in the city of Glendale. This is very important to me, for the reason that I am one of few people, or maybe the only one alive, responsible for the legislation that made the week of June 14 Flag Week in the United States in 1966. Sunday, I'm going to write a book on the history, how Flag Week was accomplished and the reason why. But for now, I'm going to close by reading the original resolution that created Flag Week in the United States of America in 1966. It's HJ Resolution 763. I think I give one to each one of the constituents. Joint Resolution, authorizing the President to proclaim the week in which June 14 occurred as a national flag week. Resolved by the Senate and the House of Representatives of the United States of America in Congress Assembly, that the President is authorized and requested to issue annually a proclamation designating the week in which June 14 occurred as a national flag week, and calling upon all citizens to display the flag of the United States in those days. And at this time, I also would like to call upon all citizens in Glendale to display the flag the whole week, the flag of the United States on this day. And Flag Week and June 14 Flag Day. So thank you very much for the honor, and thank you for remember every years about Flag Week. It's very important, like I said to me, because I'm the only one left over for that time, and we helped to create this proclamation, the week of June 14. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Vito. What is next?
Next is City Council and Staff comments.
Ms. Friedman.
It's a couple things. First of all, if you were paying attention, as I'm sure anyone who's watching this was, we had an election, and I want to congratulate the incoming new member, Paula Devine. I think she'll do an excellent job. And I also want to congratulate and thank everyone who ran. Running for office is a very difficult thing to do. You really have to put yourself out there. It takes a lot of time, and it can take a lot of money, and I commend all of those candidates who put in the effort to serve their city. Next, last week, I attended the gala for the Glendale Chamber of Commerce. I'm happy to report that it was very well attended. They installed their new officers. It's great to see enthusiastic business owners who want to take on the task of trying to improve the climate for business and help other businesses in the city. So congratulations to the Glendale Chamber and all of the members and everyone who came. Lastly, I wanted to ask my colleagues to agendize the us considering supporting a piece of legislation which is called AB 1999. And this is timely because it deals with historic preservation issues. And what this would do would be to create a California Historic Rehabilitation Tax Credit for properties that are eligible for listing or listing on the state register of historic places. And what it would do is give a tax credit to people who rehabilitate and reuse historic properties, residential or commercial properties. Many states have this, I believe 37 states have this already, California does not. It's something that would help economic development because it is about adaptive reuse and hopefully getting buildings that are out of circulation because of their state, sometimes their dilapidated state, and help property owners put money back into those properties to maintain or upgrade their historic status while at the same time using those properties as opposed to trying to demolish them because of their condition. It would give them more incentives to rehabilitate historic properties and get them used again, you know, which reduces blight, which puts people to work, all of those good things. So I would like us to, someone to second us taking up a resolution to support this bill.
Arlene Vidor just sent us an email this afternoon.
Thank you to Historic Preservation Commissioner, Arlene Vidor. She's the one who let me know about this, and it is for her that I am bringing this up tonight.
I'll second that, and hopefully with some explanation to me. I'm confused with all these bonuses, the Mills Act and everything else, but let's put it for the agenda.
Absolutely, and I will send staff right now more information about the project.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Najarian.
Just briefly, I also would like support to place on the agenda a resolution of the City Council supporting Assembly Bill 612, sponsored by Assemblyman Adrien Nazarian. This bill would require the Uber, the Lyft, and I think the Sidecar agencies, it would require them to maintain appropriate levels of insurance as well as conduct background checks on the drivers that drive for them.
I'll second that discussion, having that discussion.
Okay, thank you. As for me, I stated last week that I want to join the meeting tonight in the memory of Dr. John Davitt from Glendale. He passed away on May 24th. Mr. Najarian and I both attended the funeral, there was over 500 people there, largest funeral grouping that I've ever been to, with leaders throughout the state of California that came to it. So I have his bio now, so I want to read a little of it because he had a very extensive career. He received his bachelor's degree at the University of San Francisco in 1954, a master's degree in secondary education in 1958, also from University of San Francisco, and his doctorate in community college administration from the University of Southern California. Before coming to Glendale Community College, he served as First Lieutenant in the U.S. Army, taught at a junior high school in Frisco, and was a counselor at Merritt College in Oakland, and was an assistant professor at California State College, Los Angeles. He began his 38-year career at Glendale College in 1968 when he took a position as a history professor, serving as Administrative Dean of Personnel Services, Vice President in 1985, Superintendent President of the College. He brought his inclusive, enthusiastic, and open style of management to the college, transforming the college campus into an innovative and productive center for learning. The longest-tenured head of a community college in California, Dr. Davitt cared deeply about the institution, took pride in Glendale College being a top transfer college. An active volunteer in the Glendale and La Cunyada Flintridge Communities, John's record of community services is impressive. He's served on the boards of the Glendale Chamber of Commerce, Flintridge Sacred Heart Academy, Glendale Roundtable, Glendale Symphony, and the Glendale College Foundation. In addition, he's served on Holy Family High School's Board of Regents, Crestview Preparatory Schools Board of Directors, Glendale Memorial Hospital's Community Liaison Council, CMB its Pastoral Council, and the Archdiocese of Los Angeles Board of Education. Some of the honors Dr. Davitt received include the Presidential Leadership Award from the California Community College Foundation, the Glendale Chamber of Commerce Lifetime Achievement Award, Glendale Community College Alumni Association Award for Outstanding Contributions to the College, induction into Glendale Community College Athletic Hall of Fame, and the naming of the John A. Davitt Administration Building at the college. Married for over half a century, John and his wife Gail have four children, Terry Davitt, Laura Heel, Vincent Davitt, and Michael Davitt. He'll be solely missed by everybody as a personal friend. He helped me when I was, when my daughter told me that her future husband would be a great guy, or he was, was husband, whatever, to help get him into the college. And I told Dr. Davitt, "He won't let you down." He didn't. He graduated with honors, went to Cal State, graduated with honors, and Western University with honors, and is now a full-fledged physician assistant working in downtown Los Angeles. So we owe, my personal family owes all that to John Davitt stepping up and helping get him in. I'll miss him a great deal. We're probably, Glendale Community College probably rated the top community college in the state of California and sends more students to four-year institutions than any other one around, so he'll be missed. Mr. Najarian.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Weaver. Just to add a few words to all that, he truly was a great mentor, a great man. I served with him for two years on the Glendale Community College Board of Trustees. He was always giving, always generous with his time and his thoughts, and he transformed Glendale Community College with his concept of shared governance, where the faculty and the students and the administrators and staff all got together to deal with the issues. And that peace and that cohesiveness clearly made Glendale College, gave it the trajectory to be one of the best community colleges in the entire state. So we are going to miss John deeply, and our condolences to Gail and Terry and Laura and Michael, who is the mayor of La Cunyada, and Vince as well. So hearts go out.
Thank you. So we'll turn in his members' name, the name of this. Okay, what is next, please?
Next item is the Consent Calendar, including minutes following a routine may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council may question or council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before a motion is proposed.
Move the Consent Calendar.
Second.
The roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero. Mayor Sinanian. Mayor Pro Tem Weaver.
Hi. And next, please.
Next item is the Oral Communications portion, and this is a portion reserved for three-minute community event announcements.
Thank you. I have two cards. First one is Victor Shabazian, followed by Mona Marcos.
Good evening. Dear council members, my name is Victor Shabazian, and I'm the ARAT Table Tennis Director, which is part of the General Athletic Division of the glinda Arat Chapter. I have an exciting news to share with you. We're having our two-star USATT sanctioned tournament this Father's Day weekend, and you're all invited. I hope to see you guys there, especially on Sunday, where we're going to have top players from our committee coming in and competing against each other. And these are from Asian community, Korean community, Americans, Persians, Armenians, all getting together to compete. So, and also, if you come to our tournament, we'll give you some few hinters, we'll teach you some ping pong, and there's great food services also. So I hope to see you guys at this event. It's going to be very exciting, and I'd like to ask the audience, anybody, everybody, you're welcome to come. And to our friend, Mr. Vito, we're going to have the American flag raised and shown during the Flag Week. Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming.
And so this is, if I can add, this is a great tournament. I've been to one of the earlier ones, I'm not sure it was the two-star certified, some impressive players of all ages.
Yes.
And I'm glad that ARAT is opening up its facility. The city has supported ARAT for years through the CDBG program, and I'm glad to see that the facilities are being put to a great community use. Can you tell us which location tournament will be held at?
Yes, it will be held at the North Campus Facility, which is on the Glendale side. And as you said, it's going to be a major tournament. This time, we're bringing 12 Butterfly Table Tennis Tables, sponsored by Butterfly Organization. And it's, as you said, there's going to be great players coming in. It's going to be very exciting, and you just have to come and see it. It's going to be awesome experience for all. Thank you very much.
Thank you again. Next speaker, Mona Marcos.
Good evening. My name is Mona Marcos, and I'm here in behalf of the Safe Family Task Force. Natalie, who was supposed to be here tonight, asked me to represent her since she got detained with a client. We just would like to make you aware that Safe Family Task Force is putting on a DV panel at Glendale Memorial, Glendale, sorry, Glendale Adventist Hospital on June 26th at 6:00 PM, and the panel will be made out of professionals from different areas addressing the DV issues to make the community aware of the challenges and the problems that DV clients might having in their families and survivorship. So we are asking if you could, we have it on a really nice flyer. Women Divorce Resource will be hosting, it was like refreshments, and we're inviting several of the nonprofits in the community, like the Y and the Commission. And actually, Senator Carol Lou is also cosponsoring the event because she really believes in women issues. So we're trying to really get a lot of visibility in the community and circulate this event to as many organizations as possible. And unfortunately, the Commission said as a woman, we didn't approach them early enough, so they didn't have a business meeting to be able to vote if they can sponsor the event as well. But we're really trying to promote, and obviously, it's an important issue, and I'm sure you agree that there is a lot of that going on, so we're truly trying to find resources and answer questions and be a resource as well as a solution to this big problem around in the community. Any questions?
June 26th, right?
June 26th at 6:00 PM.
At what time?
Glendale Adventist in the.
Auditorium?
Auditorium, yes, thank you. In the auditorium.
Mr. Weaver.
Yes.
I wanted to remind you and also on the ARAT people and anyone else who's listening that nonprofits who are, you know, who fit our criteria, who are doing events, can run PSAs on GTV6 to promote their events. So that might be something that you could still do to get the word out about both of your events. You're a little bit close, but just something to keep in mind for all the nonprofits.
Thank you, thank you. Yeah, that's why I didn't want to wait till the last minute, and we try to come as soon as we got it organized so to let you know. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you very much for listening.
Okay, how about us next?
Next item under Action Items, 8A is Director of Human Resources Regarding Retirement Separation Incentive. 8A1 is a motion authorizing a retirement separation incentive for eligible city employees consisting of a one-time lump sum payment equivalent to six-month base salary and a continuation of medical insurance coverage through the month following the date of separation.
Mr. Cho.
Yes, sir. Very briefly, as the council's heard, this is part of the budget presentation. As you know, one of our strategies for providing some capacity within the overall budget in the organization is to offer an incentive either for separation or for retirement. Those folks who are eligible for retirement could receive, if they opt in, should the council approve this, six months' base salary towards their retiree health savings program, which allows them to use those funds for medical, qualified medical expenses, or for employees that would just seek to separate from the city as a general severance. This would allow or facilitate that to occur. We have met and conferred with our employee groups that would be focused upon by way of IBW, GMA, and GCEA. They are all interested and wanting to explore this further. So if council were to approve this, we would commence with the opt-in period for employees beginning as early as tomorrow, moving through the middle of July, with the city having the right to not offer this program should we not get the desired number of participants in the program. If we do get the desired number of participants and we do want to move forward, then we would organize two different timelines for people to exit the organization based on what the needs of the organization are, i.e., if we have too many people of one type of classification that might be leaving, we would be able to allow some to leave at one point in time and others to leave at another point in time, so it makes sense in an orderly fashion by way of the work that needs to get done. We would be coming back to you, as you know, at mid-year budget in February of 2015 with the reorganized city of Glendale and be able to understand what the ultimate impact of this proposed incentive would be. So, and I'm sorry, one other item, this would largely be revenue neutral because the, or cost neutral, because the positions that would be effectively vacated would be held vacant for a period of six months, equalling the value of the incentive. And then at that point, based on who was moving on, the executive team would evaluate what positions have to be refilled versus others which do not, or could go for a longer period of time without having to be refilled. That is basically the program in a nutshell. Mr. Doyle, our HR director, can answer any specific questions as they pertain to the incentive or the negotiations with the bargaining groups. We would answer any questions for the council.
We've discussed that during the budgetary process.
Yes, sir, this was an element. That's right.
So you're just telling us now the details of the timelines it'll happen in, correct?
Yes, sir.
My colleagues, have any questions? I don't think we need you, Mr. Doyle. Is it on or is there a motion?
Yes, I'll move item 8A1.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero. Mayor Sinanian. Mayor Pro Tem Weaver.
Hi. Thank you, Mr. Doyle. And let's hope for the best. A, what is next?
Nine is a hearing, 9A is, nine under hearings, 9A is Director of Community Development regarding Appeal of Historical Preservation Commission Condition of Approval of Design Review Case Number PDR 1407206 for property located at 1720 Grandview Avenue. 9A1 is a motion sustaining the Historical Preservation Commission's approval with conditions. At 9A2 is a motion continuing the matter to June 24th, 2015, City Council Meeting in order to draft findings in support of overturning the Historical Preservation Commission's decision.
Thank you, Mr. Cho.
Yes, sir, this is a public hearing regarding an appeal of HPC conditions on this property, subject property, single-family residence located at Crestview and Grandview. Our senior urban designer, Mr. Jay Platt, will give you the details of the appeal. Jay?
And before I forget, I'm going to open the hearing. I won't get in trouble.
Good evening. As you heard, this is an appeal of some work that was performed at 1720 Grandview Avenue without permits. The property is located in the North Cumberland Heights Historic District. The work basically boils down to three basic issues. There was some brick veneer that was removed from the front facade without permits, also a little bit on the side facade. Several windows were replaced, also at the front and part of the, one of the side facades. And then some ironwork was installed at the front porch. As council knows, this is a de novo hearing. The appeal is actually for one of the three conditions of approval that were placed on this case after it was heard by the Historic Preservation Commission in March. But as a de novo hearing, you can consider any of the work items regardless of whether the applicants have agreed to them or not, or whether the Historic Preservation Commission put conditions on them. By way of background, we're not sure exactly when the work was done. It was done sometime after the district was designated. Violations were issued by the Building and Safety Department on May 7th, 2013. The. The HPC hearing was on March 20 of this year, and the appeal was filed on April 2, so the appeal was filed in a timely fashion. I'll show you some images of the house and some of the work that was done. This is 1720 Grandview, facing Grandview, and this image isn't as good as some of the others. These are the photographs that were taken at the time of the Historic District's designation, so this would be in 2011. You can see the brick veneer in question was applied to these columns and also to parts of the facades at the front and wrapping around on the north facade. The windows in question, you can see, are these steel casement windows, which have very light, fine profiles that are typical of steel casement windows. There's a kind of an ancillary issue that wasn't addressed in either the violation, but the Commission discussed it in their hearing. Several shutters were also removed from the property at the time of the work. And in this case, you can see the house has now been surrounded by a large hedge, which was not in place at the time of designation, but it's also not regulated by the Historic District ordinance at this time. So a hedge such as this is legal, and the Transportation Department did look at it to see if it was a hazard for turning at the corner, and determined that it wasn't. Here is the north side of the property, which will come into play when we talk about some of the appellant's issues, in terms of why they did the work and why they thought it was appropriate to do it. So this is Crestview Avenue on the north, the hedge obviously continues along this side. To break it down into the three work components, the brick veneer was removed from the columns and the walls, as I mentioned, and was replaced with a stucco surface. You will hear from members of the community, specifically the Glendale Historical Society, that they believe several of the Commission's approvals of work were in error. The brick veneer on the building was a very thin brick veneer, which is based on both the testimony of the owner, which we have no reason to disbelieve, as well as photographic evidence that I wasn't able to insert into this presentation for tonight, but you can, I could provide photographs that show after the veneer was removed, you can see the shadow lines of where the veneer had been applied. And when you look at these columns, which are very kind of chunky, thick columns, the assertion of the Historical Society is that there were full bricks placed on these columns and on the facade, which is typical of brick cladding from the 20s and 30s. I should have mentioned, this house is from 1936. We believe that the thin brick veneer was not an original building material, it's actually kind of a more modern building material, and we think it wasn't an original feature. So our recommendation to HPC was that because it wasn't an original feature, we thought it was appropriate to remove, and HPC agreed with that.
Jay, as you go through, can you tell us what changes were permitted and what changes were not?
None of the changes we're talking about were permitted.
The brick as well?
Yeah, the removal of the brick was just done without permit, the windows and the ironwork.
Would you normally need a permit to remove brick in front of a house?
If it were structural, you definitely would, I can't say that you would need a permit to remove veneer.
Was it removed after the district was enacted?
Yes, so we would need, we would have needed a design review for that even if there weren't a permit required. In terms of the windows, this is probably the biggest physical change in terms of what we see today compared to what was at the property originally. It's also one of the hardest issues that we deal with in a design review on a day-to-day basis in districts or outside of districts. So what you see is the very thin profiles of the steel windows are now gone, and a very heavy kind of perimeter outline is found with the new windows. When HPC considered this, there was a lot of discussion about whether this was appropriate or not, and many of the commissioners were kind of going back and forth on that. The way we do design review at staff level is we recognize that these steel windows are so expensive to replace with new steel windows that it's unreasonable for us to expect property owners in Historic Districts to replace them in kind. If this were a Glendale Register property, we would have the ability to take it to that level, especially if we had a MILZAC contract. The windows that were installed are very high-quality windows, they're wood clad, or they're aluminum-clad wood windows. In many ways, they resemble windows that are typical of houses of this period. I'm not gonna go out and say that they're completely appropriate for this house, but the Historic Preservation Commission found that because they're the window type, the window quality, the spacing and size of the mottens, the grids that are on the windows, the fact that it's recessed into the window recalls the appearance of wood windows that are traditionally found on houses of this style and period.
The style being what?
I should have mentioned that, I'm sorry.
Because there's a disagreement over that as well?
Well, it's a huge question. I'm gonna say this is a hybrid-style house. In the Historic District Survey, it's called a minimal traditional house, and when we look at the front of the house, we can see aspects, that photo's a little dark. Minimal traditional is a style that became popular in the late 30s. It often incorporated some of the earlier-period revival styles, but it's kind of a stripped-down, dumbed-down version of some of those. The things that give this minimal traditional appearance are its overall shape and form. Minimal traditionals are almost always one-story, this wood siding in the gable on top of the stucco wall is very typical of minimal traditional. When we, when I look at this house as it stands today, it has this kind of a Spanish look, and I say that not because of this roof, originally this house had a wood shake roof. And we know that that was replaced with some, actually, I can't say originally it had wood shake, the earliest permit says it had shingles, which probably means wood shake. We have a permit for composition shingles later, and then later than that, we have wood shingle replacement, and then we have a permit for this tile roof, which is kind of a flat, either ceramic or some sort of composite tile. The things that make this house look a little Spanish are the very things that we're kind of talking about in terms of the design, this front porch, which has these chunky, heavy columns, looks more like a Spanish colonial porch than it looks like anything you'd see on a minimal traditional. The Historical Society is also suggesting that this might be a ranch-style house, which really didn't exist, as far as we know, in Glendale in 1936 when this house was built. Ranch-style is really a post-war style in typical suburban development, kind of high-end examples started appearing in the late 30s and into the 40s. I'm not familiar with many ranch houses in this kind of more typical suburban development pattern. Regardless of what style it is, we're kind of basing this on what's appropriate to the house as it was at the time of designation, as well as what's appropriate to the district. So my answer is it's kind of a mishmash of different styles. Officially, we're calling it minimal traditional. Here's another shot of the windows as they were installed, and one thing that we look at when you, when designers were building these houses in the 30s and into the, in the 20s, metal windows and wood windows were almost interchangeable. A Tudor house could have wood, it could have steel, a Spanish house could have wood, it could have steel. There's no set kind of window type that was really specifically found on any one type of house during, for either its style or during the period. So we kind of, to be realistic in how we assess design review in Historic Districts, we do accept some deviation from what the existing condition was. In this case, like I mentioned, because steel windows are so rare to, for anyone to choose to install and so expensive, that we believe it would be a disincentive to the Historic Districting Program if every house that had steel windows was forced to keep steel windows when they were replaced. I acknowledge that if we had had the pleasure and opportunity to work with the applicant before these windows were installed, we probably could have found a better solution than what's there. But after work is already done, and the Commission recognized it was very high-quality windows and high-quality work, I think the decision was made to kind of balance it and accept the fact that the windows are different but appropriate to the house and to the district. Finally, ironwork was installed inside each of the openings at this front porch, and I think I have some better photos in a second, but you can see here there was a low gate, this is at the time of designation. There was low ironwork in place that doesn't, didn't appear to be original to the house, but it was in place at the time of designation. So that's where we kind of freeze things, and we would say if someone could keep work, even if it wasn't original, if it was there at the time of designation. When the Commission considered the new ironwork, which here's a better photo of, you can see it more or less fills each part of the opening, and also on the side over here, so there is a gap at the top, but the iron is about 64 inches high. What the Commission found is that porches traditionally are open, there's a sense of welcoming, there's a sense of openness to the street on porches, not just in Historic Districts, not just on this style of house, but on all styles of houses of all periods in the city. Some Spanish houses, and the applicants did provide you with pictures showing other ironwork typically on Spanish houses. None of the examples that they showed showed this kind of arcaded porch. You might have a situation where you have a front courtyard with a low wall in front of it, and kind of an entry arch going into that courtyard. Very often in a Spanish-style house, that will have some decorative ironwork in that opening. But we don't have any examples that I can think of anywhere in the city where we have a front porch that's completely enclosed with ironwork like this. So for this reason, the Commission found that this was inappropriate. When reviewing the work, the Commission put three conditions of approval. The first was that it was, the work for the brick veneer removal was legalized. The second was that the windows were legalized as installed, but the Commission put the caveat on that, that new shutters be installed at several of the openings. And they made that decision based on the fact that some of the window, the proportions of the walls, and just kind of the architectural balance had been shifted by taking away the shutters. They felt that putting the shutters back would bring back that balance. One deviation from what was there, which kind of airs perhaps on the side of this house being more Spanish-looking than not, since we didn't really know what its original appearance was, was they, these are louvered shutters with the little slats running across each of them. The Commission asked that the new shutters have panels, so it'd be kind of a solid wood shutter that has kind of a recess, a couple of recess panels on it, and they felt that that would be more appropriate. Also, since they're returning something, you know, we, shutters are typical of minimal traditionals, they're not exactly typical of Spanish houses, so that was kind of a judgment call on the Commission's part, more based on the architectural balance than the stylistic And then finally, in terms of the ironwork, the Commission asked that the ironwork gave the applicants or the appellant's an option to either remove the ironwork in full, remove it completely from all three porch openings, or to reduce it in height to a height that was similar to the ironwork that was there at the time of designation, which would be between 36 and 42 inches. And the appellant's accepted all of the conditions except for that last condition, and that's specifically why they filed the appeal to be here tonight. In analyzing their rationale for the appeal, the appellant's are required to say what new evidence do they have that Historic Preservation Commission wasn't able to consider in their determination? And they presented two things in the appeal application. The question of why the work was done without permits and why they thought the ironwork was appropriate at the porch is answered by the two gates that were installed at the Crestview side of the house, where we looked at the north side that's behind this hedge. And the applicants had filed for a permit and received a permit to install this wall along this facade outside of the street, or the side-street setback. And as is really typical of a wall, you often have a gate leading from the outside to the inside, whatever the wall separating, so these two gates came along with the approval of the wall. In staff's opinion, gates like this are completely appropriate in a wall, but a full-height gate isn't appropriate at a front porch, where it kind of creates that sense of enclosure that's not traditionally found there. See the sense of enclosure here? In terms of the other aspect of the appellant's application, they included 10 additional petitions from some of their neighbors. And I should have noted that at the Historic Preservation Commission hearing, they submitted several supplemental materials, including photographs of some of these other Spanish houses that, or other Spanish houses that have ironwork at the front. They also included information about something else that I'm not finding, oh, petition from the neighbors with 46 signatures from neighbors saying that they approved the work, they found it either acceptable or they were indifferent to it. And then there was also correspondence from neighbors about coyotes, and you'll hear from the applicant that a large rationale for inserting the ironwork at the front porch is concern about safety and coyotes that have been seen in the neighborhood. When staff was analyzing the second aspect of the appeal, we didn't feel that 10 additional signatures on top of the initial 46 was really any kind of new evidence that would change staff's mind or perhaps the council's mind in terms of what the Commission had reviewed and made its decision based on. In addition to these two appeal requests, the applicant submitted several series of photos of different conditions inside their house, or typical conditions of what they think of as kind of appropriate 1930s construction. And staff reviewed those materials and doesn't feel they're really relevant to the discussion tonight. So I'm available to answer any questions you have?
Questions at this time? Yes, sir. We got this 12-page response to a letter received about an hour or two ago. Is this still considered contributory house?
We believe that it is still a contributor. Contributors aren't expected to have all of their original materials, and if we look at the brick veneer specifically, in my opinion, that was not an original feature of the house. I'm ready to be proved wrong, but I've never experienced a similar material from a similar time, and then the evidence on the house itself suggested that it wasn't original. Or it didn't necessarily say that, but it said it wasn't a full width of brick on the cladding. In terms of the windows, we, when surveyors come and look at our Historic Districts before they get designated and perform the survey, the fact that windows are not original to the house, including down to the idea of possibly having vinyl windows with interior grids, windows alone do not knock a house out of the running for being a contributor, it's kind of a succession of issues. It's a little hard to say with this house, we know that the roof was different originally.
And what about the roof?
But that was, that's not part of our discussion, so.
Well, isn't that part of a contributor?
Yeah, the house was considered to be a contributor.
But they changed the roof two or three times.
Excuse me?
They've changed the roof two or three times.
Yeah, which is, so, you know, we don't have any wood shake roofs allowed anywhere in Glendale today, so there's an expectation that we're never gonna see wood shake again. So the question is, what's appropriate? I can't say the roof on this house is the most appropriate, and again, we have this kind of stylistic confusion, so I can't specifically tell you, you know, what the best roof would be, it would be some sort of shingled roof.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
So they did quite a lot of work without permit. How is it that that was allowed to happen? I mean, how did we not stop, given the location of this property, a block away from the Brand Library, in the middle of a Historic District, with staff? Nobody drove past it and saw this? Nobody questioned it? Did we get any letters from neighbors?
Interesting, I think staff, I think we, the city behaved appropriately here. The applicants, over the course of a year, between August 2012 and August 2013, applied for and received 12 separate permits for various work around the house. It's their contention that because they had received permits for those gates on the wall, which was approved, and we did review, and that was done after the Historic District was designated, they felt it was appropriate to just assume that it was okay to take that idea and transfer it over to the porch.
What about the windows?
The windows happened around the same time, I would guess, and they were noticed by a Building and Safety Inspector who was going out to check on other work that had been permitted, and appropriately recognized, hey, what's going on here? You didn't get a permit for this work. So I think the system did work in this case.
So that was after they were installed?
Yes, which is usually when we recognize violations.
But to the extent the city has penalties and fines, were these homeowners not fined, assessed that penalty, the double permit or whatever?
Yeah, the penalty only comes when you file a permit, when you pay your permit fees for the work. So when you legalize work, we legalize it after the fact, and they haven't applied for permits for this work because they're waiting to see what happens here. But once that, once that application goes through, they'll get double fees for all that work.
Okay. So, I mean, the issue before us, just so we're clear, is
The gate.
Gate, however, because this is a de novo hearing, de novo review, we can also look at the brick veneer issue and the window issue.
You could overturn the first two Historic Preservation Commission decisions, or you could support the third, or any combination.
But before we hear from anyone else, I just want to make my position clear that, and we've been through this before with this whole de novo hearing issue, that no one from the neighborhood appealed the HPC decision for the veneer or the windows. And to go back now, to have the applicant say, well, this wrought iron fence should be permitted, and as a possible result of them requesting approval of that fence, have this council, this board, go back and say, oh, by the way, that veneer, slap it back on, those windows, find casement and put it back in. I don't think that's fair. We raised a big issue, we had a whole, who was that? Was this the Eva LaRue case where we had the de novo issue?
Yes, sir.
This was an issue that, I thought we had addressed this in some manner, didn't we have a code? When I went through the code, this is bringing back, this is before, before my hot button was developed. was developed. It was the issue of the code and the clarity, and didn't we clear that up so that in a case like this, the board, or commission, or ultimately council could not go back and address other issues that were unchallenged?
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, members of council, council member in general, my recollection was that that issue was raised, we made very clear with applicants or appellants when they appeal, that those hearings are going to be de novo, and it's like a new hearing. And I think the only thing we made sure we're clear with the, whoever appeals, they're an applicant, that they're opening up their entire application to the council for review.
Well, one other point is that even though, there's already an appeal, it doesn't really matter who files it, you're not going to have three appeals of the same case. The Glendale Historic Society has sent us a formal letter suggesting that we look at those other issues. But let me ask you a question, Jay.
No, I'm not done yet.
Okay.
I'm not done yet. So I just want to say that I find that unfair and inequitable to the homeowner. So I, as a matter of principle, will not be making any decision about reviewing the veneer or the windows. My attention and my discussions today will be entirely focused on the wrought iron fence.
Mrs. President.
Well, let me ask you about the veneer particularly. I mean, my worry about going back and asking for that stuff to be put back is how do you find appropriate material? And what do you end up with? I mean, you could say put brick on, and unless you're very strict about what product they use, I mean, you could end up with something that's much worse than what you have now.
Yeah, and the veneer brick that was on the house looks different than what we see today. It kind of had a kind of a roughened texture, almost like, a little like adobe. And I haven't seen anything like that in the new thin materials. It's possible there would be something, but you're right, that would be very difficult to bring it back to what it was. And then there's the question of whether that's even appropriate.
Yeah, I know when I was doing some work on my house, I needed padre tile. The work I did was 30, 40 years ago. And I finally found one place that had something similar, but it's pretty hard. Styles come in and go out. So to find an original type for something that was put on decades ago, pretty difficult. Any more questions?
Let me just ask more directly. If we were to say to replace the veneer, do you feel comfortable that they could find something that would be appropriate, that would mimic what had been there?
I don't. But I haven't explored that.
What about the windows?
The windows, there would definitely be a window that's more appropriate than that. The steel casement windows are still made, that look exactly like old steel casement windows. And as a matter of our interpretation of the historic district ordinance, and the sense that it would be extremely punitive, and like I said, a disincentive to designation to require the homeowners who happen to have steel windows to replace those, where it's thousands of dollars per window, that we've chosen to move in a different direction than that. But it would be possible, and it would be possible to get aluminum clad windows that probably have better sightlines, more glass and less frame than the windows that were installed.
Any more questions at this point?
I have a question for Mr. Garcia about something that was in the HPC letter about the SEQA process. Because even though this house itself is not a historic house, it is a contributor to a district. So why would it be exempt from SEQA review? Because without contributors, you don't have a district, right?
Right.
So if you, is it because you feel that the house is still a contributor? Because it seems to me that if you take a contributor and make it no longer a contributor, you have affected a resource. But is it your contention that because you think it's still a contributor, that's why SEQA doesn't come into play?
Couple of reasons, and I should add, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem and members of the council, that as you've all referenced, and I just want the record to be clear, we did, the city did receive a letter from the Glendale Historical Society today. Staff has prepared a response to those point by point, that is being made a part of the record. Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, I'll ask you to incorporate that into the record at the conclusion of the public hearing. But essentially, for purposes of SEQA, to determine whether something is of historical significance, the test is different than what is whether something is a contributor to a historic district. My understanding, and Jay can certainly correct me or put a fine point on it, is that you're a contributor if you were, if the house was built during the period of significance for that district, and that it retains much of its integrity. Whereas the test for whether something is a historic resource under SEQA is whether it meets those criteria.
Who decides if this house is still a contributor? How do we know whether it's still a contributor?
Matter of opinion.
Well, it's the evidence based on what's in the record, and I believe that staff is of the view that it still contributes to the district. But again, whether, if it did or didn't, that wouldn't necessarily mean that this is a historic resource. It's historic if it falls within one of the criteria under SEQA. It's, you know, it was, it's got high architectural integrity, last remaining type.
I'm not sure I agree with that analysis.
Well, for purposes, what I'm saying, for purposes of SEQA, the test is different for determining whether it's historic on its own, whether it's a historic resource versus whether it contributes to a historic district. So what staff, what the analysis shows is that there's no, there is no substantial evidence that this alone is a historic resource, even though it contributes to the overall historic significance of the district, because it was built during the period of significance for this district, and it retains much of its integrity overall. And certainly Jake and, or I'd ask Ms. Van Muyen to come up and add to that if you have further questions about that. But essentially, the test is different for whether it's a, it contributes to a district versus whether on its own. There's plenty of houses in this district that contribute, but which are not on their face or alone historic resources.
Right, but, yeah, but the district is a resource. You take away the contributors, you don't have a district anymore.
Correct. But then, but then the question is, and I'd have to defer to Jay, whether, I don't believe that the changes to this have led staff to the conclusion that this no longer contributes. But even if it did, hold on, even if it did, that wouldn't necessarily mean that this, the district loses its historical significance, because there are so many houses within this district that still retain that contributing status or on their own historical significance. So there's a couple of different factors that go into whether or not, if this was the last house, or the last house before you fell below that threshold, and that these changes were definitely going to mean that this house no longer contributed, then that'd be a different scenario. But my understanding is that these changes in staff's view do not mean that it no longer contributes. And in addition, that the district as a whole still has a significant number of contributing structures that contributed to the determination that the district overall was.
I understand exactly what you're saying. I disagree with the first part, and I think it's important because this may come up again. I do think that SEQA should be triggered if a contributor to a district is no longer a contributor, because it can't just be that the last house that changes that district is the only one that would be eligible. But you have another point, which is that it's still a contributor, that's a different point. I mean, that, I don't know if that's the case. But I just want to go on record as saying that I do think that if you, you can't just say, you can just keep taking away contributors, maybe when you get to that last one, then maybe SEQA's triggered because then you lose the resource. To me, I don't see what, where that, how you just, I don't want to get into an argument over it, I just want to go on record as saying I don't, I don't agree with both parts of your analysis. Maybe I will grant the second one, that it's still a contributor and SEQA doesn't apply. But I want to go on record as saying I still think that SEQA may very well come into play if you are losing parts of your district. So, that's all. I don't need to get into an argument over it.
If I could just have Jade, for the record, I mean, state whether or not this, what in your view these changes do to the contributing status of this?
For the record, we're looking at the changes, the three changes that were made to the house. We think the brick removal was appropriate because we can't say it's an original feature of the house. It's possible that removing it actually brings the house closer to its original appearance, which is a preservation goal. We believe the ironwork is completely inappropriate, and we, staff backs the Preservation Commission's condition on that. In terms of the windows, I believe it is still a contributor based on the removal of existing windows and replacement with windows that are of close enough, and I know this, these aren't the perfect windows, but close enough to what would be appropriate to a house of this style and period. We do look at contributing structures in historic districts differently than we do at Glendale Registered Properties, and I think we rightly do that. And there's discussion in the preservation community currently about the SEQA issue that we're talking about, and we're going to have other cases coming up in the near future revolving around the same issue. And we'll probably have more background, more time to do research and get some more background information when those cases come to the Preservation Commission. But for the record, we stand behind this still being a contributor with this change.
And I would just add, and I think your point is, you know, I agree with it to some extent. You don't just say, okay, given the fact, if this was going to lose its contributing status, just because we still have the number necessary, that's not necessarily the end of the question. But in this particular case, 140 of the 179 homes in the district are considered contributors. So I think my point was, you still have the overwhelming majority of the homes in this district contribute to its historic significance, and as a result, there really can't be a determination that this particular project is going to cause the district to no longer be significant.
I understand.
And the key word you use is integrity. How do you define that? Mr. Magian.
I'd like to ask Mr. Platt to come up again. And, Mr. Platt, you are undoubtedly the foremost expert within the city staff on the historical, the issue of whether a property is a contributor or not. At least I see you as that one.
In that limited pool, I'll accept that.
But
Very good.
But I do want to point out for everyone that's, you know, we're talking about a contributor, that you yourself, in all your expertise, had a very difficult time trying to classify the basic architectural style of this house. You said, is it Spanish, maybe, maybe it's a ranch, but no ranch, they didn't have ranches back in the 1930s. And you ultimately put it in this catch-all category, that I think is kind of a catch-all, which is the minimalist, what was it?
Minimal traditional.
Minimal traditional.
Which is a recognized architectural style by everyone out there, so we accept that as a style. Hybrids are common, and plus alterations may have been made over the years that we have no record of, so.
Okay. But this isn't the Wyon House that we're talking about, with a specifically defined, you know, with your eyes closed, you can define the characterization of the style. This took you some work. Yes.
Thank you. Are you ready for the public? Okay, the applicant, who is here for the applicant? One, two.
I'm going to grab a quick.
Wait, timeout.
This will.
When we come back, recess. When we come back, just getting some coffee. How many speakers for the applicant, I mean, that are presenting the case?
There'll be three.
You're all speaking?
Oh, I'm sorry. As part of the presentation, I believe there's some other.
I know, but the presentation, three of you? And how many minutes do you anticipate?
We'll be as quick as we can. That affects your decision.
Five minutes, 10 minutes, 15?
Ten minutes.
10 minutes? Okay, set the clock for 10. We'll start, just your name.
Are we started? Okay.
Don't worry, we'll try the 10 and see what happens. You turned a card in?
I did not.
You will when you finish here.
I will.
Your name for the record now, and then fill in the card afterwards.
Thank, I will do that. My honorable Mayor Pro Tem, but past mayor, I have the past mayor's club and the future mayor's again, I'm sure. My name is Kirk Cartosian, manager at Choa, Honorable City Clerk Kusakian, and community at large. I am a friend of the applicants. Hamlet and Donatella, they're also here, because to some degree, I don't want to speak their words, but I'm in a less emotional frame of mind, will be sharing the position and the request before you this evening. Do we not have the ability to show our presentation?
Good.
Oh, great. Again, my name's Kirk Cartosian. I live at 1505 Royal, near Glendale College. Obviously, we're speaking about northwest Glendale today. I was, I was happy to see the flag, the American flag, in the presentation. That was not staged. Some of the pictures you saw earlier, that American flag was not staged for today or Flag Day. We want to give you a little background on this home, its history, and some of the major points and requests before the city council this evening to consider this matter. We understand it's a discretionary matter, and we appreciate that this evening. So we'll go a little bit before and after the attempts by the applicants to restore the historical integrity, even though the historical nature of it, or at least the architectural defining elements of it, are a bit scant and hard to determine. There is a coyote issue in the area. It's not the overwhelming reason for their application and request tonight. And we'll give a little detail of the overwhelming community support out there. And other, and in addition to that, the fact that this really, this is not a code issue. This is a recommendation of the Historical Commission. We respect the time they took to that, and the fact that we're really boiling down to what we believe are 22 inches and shutters or no shutters. Hamlet, Sarkisian, and Donatella, Gomalsky, Guchar are here this evening. They, like many, have, are relocating and coming to Glendale. My wife and I actually moved to Glendale within a couple months of them. We relocated here too. The home had a number of issues. And to suggest that this home has not been thoroughly evaluated, inspected, there have been more than 40 to 50 visits by inspectors. There was a brand-new pool built in the backyard, fully permitted. There's a brand-new barbecue with gas lines. This home is known very well by the city. We really are boiling down to a few remaining items. The suggestion that there was all this work done without permits, I think, is disingenuous to the work that they have done. They might not want to share, but we're talking about more than half a million dollars of investment in this home. The brick wall was collapsing, and I won't read through the entire presentation, but there are a number of things and work that took place during essentially a 14 to 15-month period of time, from that May date until essentially mid-October. The Historic Commission, or the overlay itself, was established in November. It is the contention, and you can, if you want to ask them directly, that the work was done prior to the overlay being adopted. And if staff has some proof otherwise, I haven't seen it myself. I believe that the brick veneer and everything that was done was done previous to that period of time. 1930s, I'm an avid, I don't, I wouldn't say I'm an architecture aficionado, but I'm friends with Alan Hess, who's a ranch house specialist, and speaks at a number of, you know, venues on the West Coast, and I'm privy to a lot of what ranch house style is. And this home may have some components of it, but this home has a tattering of different architectural styles. Hamlet and Donatella did pour their heart into essentially trying to restore the home to its 1930s grandeur. It was between 1936 and 1940 is when the home was built. Obviously, the world was at war at that time, and the United States, I guess, a year later in 1941. So I don't know if architecture was necessarily the most prominent consideration at the time. The smooth stucco work, tile work, iron rod, a lot of these elements were permitted. They were purchased, we have receipts showing purchases of these elements in summer of 2013, and work done, the barbecue inspection final was done on August 1st, 2013.
12.
Oh, I'm sorry, 2012. Thank you. So what I'm going to go through today is just a quick before and after. You'll see, I mean, this was not done without the knowledge of staff. There were a number of visits, the pool, the barbecue. There's a collapsing wall which was encroaching upon the adjacent home. That is the same picture, which was the, in the upper right, which was the original with the, previous to the brick veneer. After, there, you see a landscape of the backyard and the front porch gate in question. The, to the left portion of the screen, that's on crest view, which apparently is okay as far as its height, as was already described. But the grand view gate at, with, you know, above a 22 inches is in question. It's actually set further back from the property line. It's actually set further back from the property line, the gate in question, is than the other two that are, that are apparently okay. So, again, the non-staged flag, and the 64 inches, 64 inches, and what we would hope and ask the council to consider that 64 inches be okay here. It's consistent around the home, and, and we feel it's in taste of the home. Mr. Platt did, and we used staff's words from the Historic Commission in, on the March 20th date, that the removal of the brick veneer could even bring it closer to its original appearance. Again, we don't even know. And there aren't even, there's not even a clear definition of whether or not permits to remove the veneer were even required, or are even required. And again, it was done previous to, it is the contention of the applicant, the establishment of the overlay. These are kind of a restatement. And the last line, I'd like to just kind of hit over, and these are from neighbors, and we'll share a little bit more about what they've shared. Their, the gate provides a needed safety and does not compromise the historical integrity. But again, safety is one of the components. If she would like, Donatella can speak a little bit to her personal battle with celiac disease. It, you know, they're more definitional there, just for council, staff, and community's knowledge. But the garden is very essential to the, to both Hamlet and Donatella. They, they rely on and source about 70 to 75 percent of their food directly from their garden, which sits in the front yard. I'll describe a little bit to why that's important. Here is the garden looking southwardly down Grand View, in the front yard. It's a known issue in the community. It might not be necessarily a major sticking point for this evening. And again, the entire yard is not secured. But I, I think if they were allowed to put up a gate near the ficus perimeter, they would. But they, they believe that that would not, that would be challenged by the city. But you have regular occurrences of packs of coyotes in the neighborhood. The applicants, specifically Donatella, was attacked on two occasions and, and utilized the gate in order to hide, to, to screen herself behind some months back. The, there, you're, Mr. Platt's correct, there were, there are more and more names that are, have signed on to the petition of the request. There are 65 immediate neighbors who are supporting the request, and none have refused to sign. So, those who signed are not indifferent, they're supporters.
Okay. Just a second. You said 10 minutes for the three of you combined. You've used 10, you're not done yet.
I'm including any questions you might have of them, but I could wrap it up pretty quickly.
Okay. Keep a count.
Should have said 15 minutes, my apologies.
Ah, oh.
But you have, none who refuse to sign, none whose sign were indifferent. They were all supportive of the request, one of whom is a recognized television celebrity, I guess, who, who I hope doesn't do a story on this. But there, there's a lot of support in this, in the community for their request. Again, this is a recommendation. We respect the process. We respect the Historic Commission's 100 minutes that they took, I believe, in discussion to make that determination. And the recommendation was, in the end, to add shutters to the, to the windows, which are not vinyl. The windows, to, to my knowledge, are not vinyl windows. And, and that the front porch gate should be removed and be reduced down to the height that it was when they first purchased the home, which we still don't know if that was the original. Well, so, again, there are two that are okay, one is not okay. And whether or not a shutters make sense there is essentially, I guess, the point tonight. So, we, we're, we're here, we're here to answer any questions. We appreciate your time, and I'm sorry for going a little bit over.
Okay, so there's nobody else on the team?
As far as presenting, we've, we've presented, and, and the applicants can also answer any questions if you have them this evening.
Why don't you wait till, you're only here to answer questions, let the other people speak, and then allow you to come back, because there's no other side. You're an organized team.
Thank you.
Are you appealing the shutters, too? Because our staff report only talks about the gate.
We...
Is the appeal for the shutters as well as just the gate?
We really are appealing, that's, that's true. I mean, we can take the shutters off. We just thought that if the homes, to place shutters on a Spanish home are a little bit...
You just said you weren't going to do a de novo hearing.
And I'm just asking, just for clarity, but...
Mr. Najarian, please come through the chair.
Does that make sense to you? I'm not taking it, I stated my position, but he appealed the gate.
Gate.
Are we now precluding him from also requesting a larger scope?
Nobody's precluding anybody, except for you.
We can remove the shutters.
I mean, the issue is, it's a de novo hearing, so whatever was approved, right.
Okay, for everyone. I'm just asking. We, we can remove the shutters. It's technically not a part of this consideration.
Thank you. Any other questions, Ellen?
Well, Mr. Platt, did you have something to add to this confusion at this point?
Just regarding the shutters, the shutters are a condition of approval for the approved, for the commission's approval of the windows. The windows were approved, as is, with the caveat that certain, certain window openings have new shutters.
Are those the front ones?
It's the front windows that aren't under the porch. And then there's one small window that wouldn't have shutters. So, it's basically three larger...
I mean, if Mr. Najarian doesn't want to go to, go there, then I guess I'm willing to not go there.
Are you okay with, with the staff's recommendation? They'll be too complex, and we understand the complexity.
Do you happen to have a photo of what they approved? Because you said it's a different shutter, so do you have?
I don't have a photo. It's different than what you were just showing, I could sketch it for you.
Just because I'm uncomfortable not knowing what the condition was. No one's shown us a picture of what's been conditioned in terms of the shutter.
I could describe it. Rather than a shutter with the horizontal louvers filling the frame, you would have the same rectangular frame. It would be sort of like a door. If you picture a very small door, it would be a frame, the top, bottom, and sides, there'd be a center bar running across, and then there'd be two panels recessed inside that frame.
Okay. Should we go on with the other public speakers? Maybe we can ask more questions. Francesca Smith. Let's try three minutes. If you can do it in two, that's fine.
Great. And I didn't have the luxury of submitting a presentation. We have two items that we were hoping you all could receive, since they didn't come out very well in the letter. One is the comparison, the before and after, and the other is the Secretary of the Interior Standards for Rehabilitation highlighted, showing which one...
That was all in the report sent in by the Historic...
Nope. These were on two different pages, so they're hard to compare. And this entire litany of just 10 rules and how they don't work...
Mr. Mayor Protam, so would you like those to be part of the record?
If, if possible.
Yeah, so you have to, you have to then submit them to the city.
Okay. I made as many copies as...
Ma'am, is it these?
That's on two different pages. So, it's on one page here, and the standards are the other. Thanks.
And the other picture?
My client's...
And this one?
Yeah, they're supposed to be on the same page, so you can compare them.
What?
They, they ended up on different pages. That's, hopefully, this will be easier to compare. Two minutes, 13 seconds.
Okay, I mean, I can read them.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Good evening, I'm Francesca Smith, I'm a...
Oh, wait, wait. Start over again, Mr. Kosakian. Okay, you ready?
My name is, yeah, hi. My name is Francesca Smith. I'm an architectural historian with 28 years of experience doing this. I've worked on certified rehabilitations all over the country. I've represented different cities as a consultant to the cities and as a staff to LA, Orange, Monterey, Pasadena, Vallejo, Beverly Hills, Carmel, and I now work for the state of California. I serve, I'm privileged to serve on the Preservation Advocacy Committee of Glendale Historical Society. We respectfully believe that the commission erred seriously in approving the replacement windows, plaster, veneer, shutters, and we're okay with the shorter, shorter metal gate. Thank you. But not that okay. I'll go quickly. It's important to note, this was a contributor to an established historic district. It's a serious problem in Glendale, I think you all know, people doing work without permits. The fact that its style is being debated is troublesome. Calling it Spanish now, based on a roof that was added in 1983, I think, is an error. I think ranch style actually does work. Perhaps Los Angeles in the '30s, the book All About LA Architecture During the '30s, if any of you wants to look at it, it talks about ranch style, which evolved from the ranchos. Regarding the ironwork and the coyotes, I'll just say, close your front door. We have coyotes, too. I have a very tall gate to my backyard, hoping it'll keep out the coyotes, but we keep our front door closed. It's not in keeping with the style, as you've already heard. Regarding the windows, we sincerely agree that, disagree that they're at all appropriate. Unfortunately, they're gone. Steel windows are available, and we also didn't see any discussion of a problem, any evidence of why they needed to be removed, which is part of what's in the design guidelines. You need to show what's wrong with them. Regarding the veneer, wow, where do I start? 1933 earthquake in Long Beach, code changes were swift, and a lot of city officials and building inspectors met from all over the place very quickly. Masonry load-bearing brick was not used very much after 1933 earthquake, especially when it had to do with schools. The fact that it was painted brick, it would be put-backable, gosh, I work on this all the time. I believe it would be put-backable if it were, if they were made to. The assertion that it was just veneer, I don't understand. So, did they, did they get it under the windows to get that roloch brick in there? Did they cut out some of the thing? To close, we think that we want you to adopt motion number two and rethink it. There are a lot of very big issues, especially the sequoia issue. So, in this case, and in the issue of another case before you soon, historic district contributors are being demolished or, or altered so much so that they're not recognizable. I showed this to a number of professional colleagues.
Thank you.
And that diagram that you have, one used language that you wouldn't want to hear. Nobody thought it was still a contributor. Maybe you guys can see.
Is your address in Glendale?
Yes.
Oh, good, good.
In Brockmont Park.
Oh, good.
Not a contributor.
I went to Columbia University. I do this all day long.
Yeah, very good, thank you.
For the state. And I write environmental impact reports.
Thank you. Next speaker is Margie Simkins. Try to keep it to three minutes.
Good evening, I'm Margie Simkins. I am a friend and the Realtor for Donatella and Hamlet. I represented them on the purchase of that house. I actually live two blocks away and have lived in that same neighborhood my entire life. I'm well aware of how this house looked in 1955, in 1965, in 1985, and in the year 2012, when they bought it. I was once accused of playing loose and fast with architectural terms when I shared with a member of city staff that the house was not Spanish, but it was traditional. And I was told, yeah, no, I was wrong, it wasn't traditional. There is a moving target here. I don't understand what the issue is. It's the house is Spanish, then it's not. The house is, all this work was done prior to the historic overlay zone? That is not true. I worked on that historic, that historic districting. I sold them the house in May. They did all this work before, prior to the adoption of the historic North Cumberland Heights historic districting. Everyone in the neighborhood knows that. Everyone in the neighborhood was very interested what they were doing, especially when the hedges went up and the garden went in. I personally created that survey and went and met with people, and I don't know where some of my signatures went, because I met with more than 57 people and stood on their doorway with pictures of the house, going, "You know what? I'm not here to argue. I don't, whatever you want. You're opposed, you're not opposed, you don't care." Overwhelmingly, people were like, "Yeah, no, that looks a lot better than it used to." And, yeah, I have, I'm not opposed to it. So, there's, there's just some inconsistencies here that just keep coming up. And with the Historical Preservation Society, which I'm a member of, and I really appreciate what they do, where were they at that Historical Preservation Commission hearing? Why didn't they show up? The city sent out postcards to all the neighbors in a 500-foot radius. We came forward with the survey, because I had told Donatella and Hamlet, they're gonna, they're gonna send these cards out, so we're gonna go around to those same homeowners and find out. Just get ready, because you just need to know, forewarned is forearmed, right? And we were surprised when people were like, "Yeah, we don't care. We really don't care." And they, and nobody cares about that gate. So, and there's no, there's no code to have a gate on the porch. And to say that there are no gated arcades, drive down El Meradero.
So, are you saying the gate was put up before there was a district?
Ms. Friedman.
The gate was completed in July, and our historic district was adopted in November. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, next speaker, Harold. He didn't put a last name down.
I live in...
Wait, wait, wait. Harold?
Harold Ginder, G-I-N-D-E-R. I live at 1714 Grand View, which is next door to 1720, and I've lived there since 1968. And I have watched several people live in that house next to me, and the only ones that have really improved it are the current occupants, who are trying to justify what they've done. And we had, I think, over 50 people there one night for tea and coffee and things, and they all agreed that this is a lot better than it was. And it is, it, it makes me want to upgrade my house. So, if that's, if that's bad, I don't understand it. So, that's all I have to say.
A question, sir.
Yes, sir.
I walked down this Grand View from the house, and it seemed like the house was going down. All of them had high gates of wood or metal going down the street. Looks like you've all done it for one reason or another.
There are houses there that, that have rather high fences around them.
I just wondered, because I was like, "Where? Ah, all got them."
I can't see that ironwork, if you call this a Spanish house, or a, or a, any other, whatever you want to call it, the ironwork goes with that particular house, and the rest of the ironwork around the house.
Okay, thank you, you answered my question. Okay, the last speaker is Louise Peebles.
Thank you very much. I'm Louise Peebles. I'm a resident within the historic district. I lived right around the corner, on the corner of Cleveland and Matilah, for many, many years. I was also one of the 19 members on the, the committee that formulated the guidelines for historic districting, now goes back about eight or nine years. I'd like to say that I have also watched the incarnation of that house over many owners. The first ones raised their children there. The last ones were there and did some work on it. It's taken many shapes. And I think what we have now is very attractive. Now, I know attractive is not always just what's important in a historic district. But I do know that on working on those guidelines, we know we were going to face situations where there were houses that were not always easily identified, were not always perfectly in some slot by years or by style. This happens to be one of those houses, and you've heard it in many ways here from a variety of people. To expect these people to have kept this back to some period, even before, I know the names of the people, I won't use them, that were there, who had a swimming pool, then the swimming pool was filled in. Now, we have another new swimming pool. I would like to say that the city, for many good reasons, has exceptions to code sometimes, exception to tradition. exception to tradition. People come before you and request variances, developers all the time, whether it's cars or style or a number of stories. This is a person's home. Now, I am not really that knowledgeable to talk that much about the shutters and the windows, per se, but I will tell you, the ironwork is extremely attractive. My husband and I have walked that corner for 25 years. We are big walkers, we belong to the Y, but we walk. That, when you looked at the picture of the gate, now, there's the ironwork, there's the work across, but the gate, the gate itself is, they're saying, 22 inches too high. I remember the previous gate. The only thing that ever happened with that gate is occasionally the mailman would curse, open the little teeny gate, go in, put the mail in, and come back out, or any of us who lived in the neighborhood were putting in some flyer about something. So all they've done is take what was an innocuous little nothing gate, and they put in a very attractive gate. I'm not going to talk about coyotes, we all face coyotes, but I do think what is there now is in a straight line of sight. When you looked at the first pictures, the pathway, if you were standing at the intersection, at the very corner, may I finish, of Crestview and Grandview, the original path came on a diagonal and hit right at that junction, under the sign. Now they've taken the pathway and they've made it straight, right into the door. And because, and this is a whole different discussion, but since we do have what I'm calling green fences, we have podicarpus walls, we have, in front of the Gone with the Wind House on Kenneth, everybody's putting up large, large plantings. These people have done the same thing, okay? The only way my husband and I can even see this gate that is being found so objectionable is to be standing right at the, about a two-foot walkway area, three foot, and look straight down into their house, and there you can see the gate. Anybody else who drives by, jogs by, takes the dog by, or who just doesn't care, is not even going to see that gate, probably. It is not that ungodly. And you, because of the greenery and their lovely food garden, you don't even see the other parts of the wrought iron work. I believe when we did the work for the historic districting guidelines, and guidelines is an appropriate word, there were things that we conceived along the way, we're going to have to have a little bit of an exception. This gate is one. And I just don't see that it can be that objectionable, that it's going to degrade a whole historic district to have this particular gate. Thank you, and think about it.
Okay, I have no more cards unless you have questions of the owner. If not, I'll close. Who to rebut?
The appellate slash applicant, they should be given the opportunity to rebut.
Anybody want to rebut what they've heard negatively? Are you satisfied with what you've heard? Your names for the record.
Hamlet Sarkisian, I'm the owner of the house.
I'm Donatella Gomelski-Guichar, I'm the owner of the house.
So can we comment on what has been said here?
I just want to comment at the end. Would you fill in a card, too? I only have for Hamlet.
Oh, yeah, okay.
They'll get you one.
Do it after.
After, after, talk.
I just have only two very quick comments. One was that I did not know we're coming here to discuss all three issues, because we had an extensive hearing on HPC March 20th, where we heard, we presented our case, everything, decisions were made, and we were only going to speak about the iron gate. And I, this was my conversation also with Mr. Jay Platt, we spoke about this thing, and I asked only for variance, to speak about this, to present our case, why these 22 inches are so important for us, that we left our children at home with babysitter, we spent so much money and time, and we're pursuing this thing, and it's definitely not for an egotistical issue, it's just because it's important to us. It's a safety issue. And secondly, I want to say that, to clarification, that all these three works were done prior November 2012, and we have all the resources to prove it, veneer removal, and windows and the gate. And we had utter respect for the historical guidelines. We were aware of it. Margie Simkins, our Realtor, she told us that there is an application pending, so we were aware of it. So once we started sandblasting the property, the brick veneer deteriorated. That's what happened. We have a permit on stucco of the entire house. We had no idea that there is a special stucco permit for the front of the house. And what happened with the windows was that we have built two extensions for this home, and there were another 15 windows which were permitted. But for the front, we really took our time to try to match those windows. The case windows, steel case windows, each one, we spent two months researching on this thing, it cost $6,000 each. And we came to conclusions that we cannot afford it, so we tried to do the best we can to match it. The reason they were not permitted, it was just, quite frankly, during middle construction, I suffered stroke. So it was not, it was my mistake, I just missed that point, and that's all it was. Now, on the height of the porch gate, I would like Donatella to tell her, she was attacked by coyotes. It's a very important issue. It's an issue for our family. It really is. Her access to the front garden is essential for the health of this family. When we were at Mr. Jay Platt's office, whom we respect very much, we were told that this house has Spanish style to it. So then we went to HPC hearing, and we were told this is minimal traditional style, which we were completely shocked. Today, out of nowhere, we have this Historical Society letter that says it's a ranch style. So you know, it's like you make a movie and you don't know, it's a comedy, it's a drama, or it's a reality show. It's just mixed everything to one another, and we did follow, because we do respect Jay's opinion, we did follow him. We briefed Mr. Jay Platt, who came to our property, and he was very complimentary. He says it, we put our heart and our soul into it, we love Glendale, we love raising our children there, and we just want to be part of community. But we cannot afford now to go back and to do another construction, so that is Historical Society letter. So I would like you to consider only the gate issue, and if it's possible, to resolve this issue in favor of my family.
Thank you. Has summarized your feelings, too?
Yes, this is my feeling, too. I mean, I really put attention on design and on respecting the neighborhood, and even though we were not doing the construction at the time when the overlay was active, I knew the importance of getting things into their juice, historical juice. It's always the way I have been doing my work anyway, when I renovated. What I mean by that, I mean the style of what looked like.
I see.
Yeah, what looked like, like the scene, because it was difficult to figure it out. But we had a porch, we had some, you know, the color of the roof tiles, and the fence, the wall around the property. Why is it so important for me, the gate? Because I do spend a lot of time in the front of the house, as Kirk was explaining to you my medical condition. And it happened already twice, that I got followed by a bunch of coyotes early morning. And I know everybody have doors in their house, I do hear, I was told by the Historical Commission representative, but it's just that by the time I get from my vegetable garden to behind my front door, if I had not had this gate, I would have probably been really wounded, or my dog, or my child, I don't know, but they were up to us until we were behind the gate. They were not disraded by my "who, who" to go away. So that didn't work out. Yeah, it didn't work out. So I'm just not sure, you know, what is more important? To be back to the height of what the gate was before we bought the house, even though we have no proof that it was an historical gate? So nobody knows how was this porch in 1936. Nobody has any paper or pictures or any proof that the gate was all the way, not all the way, half the way. We do not know.
Okay.
Just may I add one more thing?
One more thing.
I want to tell you that during construction, this house was, I've always consulted with neighbors, every week or every other week, there were inspectors, multiple inspectors visiting the house. It was open for our neighborhood to see what we're doing. Because I wanted to make the house that would be pride of the neighborhood. And we only get extreme compliments for that.
It looks like you didn't make many enemies of the neighbors, touching from letters and support. Thank you very much.
Very much for your time.
Mr. Mayor, before you close the hearing, I would just, again, like to ask you that you order that all documents that were submitted during the hearing, before the hearing, be made part of the record.
Thank you, I saw the order.
Thank you.
Okay, if there's any other questions, I'll close the public hearing. And you can take your turns, whichever one wants to go first.
Well, I'll go.
Mr. Njeri.
Very interesting. I'm always learning a little bit about architectural style. I do put my money on Mr. Platt, though, Ms. Smith, in terms of.
At least in Glendale.
In terms of, I got a pull from my own team. Despite me having, we've had issues before, but I, and I understand there is some difficulty in characterizing this house, but that only goes to its strength as a contributor. So even if it is, let's assume it's a contributor, if there are levels of contributors, I think this is probably on the lower scale of contributors. I've heard some discussion and testimony about the time at which the modifications to the home were made. The Realtor said that this was sold in May, and that the historical overlay was passed in November, and that the work was done in between that time. So I think that in and of itself would exempt this house from, no, it wouldn't exempt it. All right, scratch that.
Again, it still needs permits, the permits need, some desire review approval from somebody, so it would have either been HPC or Desire Review.
I think the gate is tasteful. I think the gate is functional. I think the gate is in full compliance and accord with the other homes in the block. This isn't some crazy add-on, you know, pink flamingo on the roof that is obnoxious and has no purpose, and sticks out like a sore thumb. I think it is in line with the other homes, what other style those other homes may be. I think the neighbors, whose opinion I hold very highly in these type of issues, as well as someone from the founding committee who developed the North Cumberland Heights zone, also weighs very heavily on me. So I'm, added to the fact is that this is hardly visible from the street. Granted, those shrubs could be gone with the next owner. I think, everything being considered, I'm going to overturn the HPC decision that the gate should be removed and replaced with a shorter gate. And as I said, I'm, and as I understood also from the applicant, that they're okay with the shutter issue, and especially based on the statements of Mr. Platt and his discussion with Ms. Friedman, that the brick veneer would be very troublesome to replicate, I'm going to let the veneer issue remain as is, and let the stucco be kept on the house.
So you're only recommending the shutters?
No, I'm gonna.
You're just going to do it on the gate?
Yeah, I'm just saying. Gate, I'm going to stick with the decision regarding the shutters. Actually, I'm not even going to deal with that, so I'm not going to overturn the shutters or the veneer.
Gotcha.
And I'm going to let the gate remain as it is, which would be overturning the HPC decision.
Okay, Ms. Friedman.
Go ahead, I'm still getting my thoughts together.
Well, I wrote down my comments, because I want to make sure that I got this in the right order. And I've lived in Glendale, next month will be 75 years. My father built our home in 1938, Spanish, and we had a porch, a nice, big, wide porch overlooking the canyon. No gates or anything, it was all open with a sitting ledge, I still remember it. I'm just upset with my father when he sold it. I hope to live in it someday. So I'm going to try to be objective in what I'm saying here. I've read our report, all the emails that I've received, except for the one I received here, from staff during the council meeting. I visited the house, I parked, I walked around the whole house. You know, after doing all that work, this is what I feel I have to do. One, I cannot see the house because of a 10-foot hedge. I can see the roof. And I said, that doesn't look like the 1930s. And I've heard there was two or three different kinds of roofs on there. So where's the historical value of the roof alone? My father's house had beautiful tile roof, and it's still there. So that bothered me. I read where it was modified in 1983 from a shake roof to a terracotta tile roof, that came in the letter was sent. Okay, what was it before that? I don't know. I have no idea, knowing what was put in the 30s, and all the houses up and down the street, you can't tell from those. And then more than 50 neighbors supported it, and another 10 or more Historic Preservation Commission that I just about always support. I think they're wrong when they say you can't worry about what the people in the neighborhood think. Well, to me, the neighbors, people in the community elect us. They also can tell us what they want in or out of an ordinance, and so I take into account what the neighbors said is a big factor. They're not complaining. None here tonight. I happen to believe the historical value of the house has been severely compromised to the point where I don't think it's a contributor. Owners have done a lot of work on it, which I appreciate, bringing it back up to livable standards. I can imagine the electrical wiring and everything in a 1930s home, just have to go down and talk to Porto's Bakery, where when they put that addition in, they had to size me to retrofit it, they had to put in all a new electrical, all new plumbing. This comes from the same era, so I can imagine what they walked into. So I just cannot agree with the Historical Preservation Commission, the historical value of this house at this time. The question here tonight is the wrought iron gate. Well, when I did the homework, and I then searched on the internet, and I typed in, how high a fence can a coyote, and I'd even have to finish. It finished it for me, and then countless articles. I didn't know, the average coyote weighs about 30 pounds and can leap over a six-foot-high fence without even touching it. Six foot? My gosh, I would have thought a six-footer would stop anything, but it doesn't. So here is an applicant with young children and a small dog, bait for any coyote. We had a child that was killed here a few years ago, I knew the family, remember, that was in the paper? A coyote mauled it, killed the child. I still remember that.
That was like 30 years ago, but I do remember.
No, 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 because I know the owners.
That was a while ago.
It's a while back, but it stuck with me. So I see enough pictures with enough coyotes out there. So if I'm going to air, I'm going to air on the side of safety, not historical, on something that is not really historical today, not even contributing. I want the gate up there, at least six feet's going to stop a lot of coyotes. I want the gate up there, at least six feet's gonna stop a lot of coyotes from coming in. And the applicant has spoken to that. Plus, the gate is over 20 feet back. And as been said, when I'm walking around the house, I was trying to look through the shrub to see what the house looked like. And the only place I could get to was that one, two, or three-foot wide gate and then look clear to the back. I don't know about other people, but if I'm walking down the sidewalk, I'm not stopping to look into openings and then, "What's that in there? Oh my God, that must be an illegal gate." And I'm not doing that. I don't think anybody else is, from what I've heard. And to the coyote issue, because I want to touch on that, I checked with the Pasadena Humane Society and with the Glendale Police Department. And just to reaffirm what you should know, state fish and game regulates the protection of coyotes. If homeowners have such a problems, as they appeared in those folders, I want to give a number. They should be calling the dispatch line of the Glendale Police Department. Number's 548-4911. You can also conduct a community meeting. And Pasadena Humane Society will send out an officer to meet with you, like if you have a committee meeting, and tell you things that you can do to protect yourselves from the coyotes since you're not allowed to do anything else. That's state law. It is fish and game. I suppose you could try to get a speaker to come out, but you should take those steps. When I see three or four coyotes on the street at one time, that's a roaming pack and they're setting up a target. So with that said, I'm gonna vote to permit the high gate to be there. I see nothing wrong with it. And I will always err on the side of safety over historical value on a house that's not really historical. I don't even think that's contributing anymore. Nice house, but I can't see it. So I'm gonna keep the gate as far as I'm concerned. Thank you. Ms. Friedman?
Yeah, so a whole lot of issues here, which is why I wanted to take a minute to write some thoughts down. I think we can see where this is going at this point. She's smiling applicants, unsmiling non-applicants. She's smiling, just, you know, with frustration. Just a few points. I tried to put them in some kind of order, but they're not in great order. A lot of people referred to the house looking better, but I just want to make it clear to the public that in a historic district, that looking better isn't always the point. It's about the historic integrity of the district. So just throw that out there. I think what's confusing about this and what the problem here is that you have a house that has been changed over the years pretty substantially. I look at the house, I'm not a historic preservationist, you know, professional historic preservationist, but it's something that I do have an interest in. And I don't see any Spanish here, except for the roof, for whatever it's worth. Clearly, that roof replacement changed a lot in terms of the character of the house in the 1980s. And then you have a series of subsequent changes that make it difficult to really pinpoint what the style of this is. And that's why I think there is this kind of confusion. I think, my guess is that the applicants weren't trying to game the system. I mean, they were doing a lot of work on this house and had inspectors all over this property. Generally, when people are trying to sneak something through, they kind of do it on the weekends, they don't want any one of those construction going on. I think there was genuine confusion here about what was allowed and what wasn't. I don't know. I'm not a mind reader. Be that as it may, something positive that I would like to come out of this hearing is that we take it upon ourselves to very aggressively notify residents within historic districts and proposed historic districts about what the process is, about how you get, what you need approval for, and how that's done. I didn't know whether, I mean, I believe that removing any kind of facade in a historic district is something that needs designer review. I'm not sure if it is necessary in the rest of the city. I would guess that there are people who live in these districts who honestly don't know. If they have a permit for stuccoing, they assume that that means that they can remove the brick, because you're not going to stucco over. So then they have this confusion. And I think that it behooves us to keep ourselves out of this situation in the future, to make sure that we clearly, we come up with some kind of brochure that people will read that says, "This affects your property. Here's what you need approval for and here's how you get it." That way, people can't come to us in the future and say they were confused as easily. So I would really like us to do that. We also, again, have this issue of people that are in districts that haven't been formed yet and how they get approval and for what, when it predates a district but there's an application. Something that I think we need, and we have another one that's going to be coming up, is something that I think we need to develop a very firm policy on. Do we freeze approvals if there's an application? Do we say until there's a district adopted, you follow the old rules? I think there's that confusion and we really need to get a policy that's clear that everybody understands about that. Right from the moment of application, what happens? And even from the moment we know an application's coming in, do we stop things and say, "There's an application coming in. You might be a contributor to a district." SEQA might come into effect at that point. You know, I don't know. I do disagree with staff about SEQA not coming into play just because there's enough of these houses. I'd like to go on record of that, because you start chipping away at that and all of a sudden, you don't have a district anymore. It doesn't affect them, because I, you know, I think they may still be as much of a contributor as they were before, given the alterations that this house already had. I mean, I think it already wasn't a pure style, you know? I don't know. I guess that what happened at HPC had to do with some frustration on their part with the buildup of changes that changed the style so much. You've got the windows, to me, a bigger change than the gate. You know, that fenestration change, very substantially altering the look of this house. Whether or not, I mean, the hell change, it's a big difference between those very heavy-feeling windows that are very kind of Spanish and the old casement windows that are light, more like something you would see on a ranch or, you know, minimal traditional style. The shutter's being removed, then you have the gate. All of a sudden, you have a house that looks very, very different. So even though they ended up only really doing the shutters and the gate, I think there's some frustration there of them wanting to retain something of what had been there. I'm sitting here now thinking, for 22 inches, is it worth the expense to put them through? Given that you're not asking them, they didn't ask them to replace the windows at HPC. I don't know even if they were asked to do that, what we'd end up with, without knowing what materials would be appropriate and what's available in the market. So, you know, obviously, the HPC is going to be overturned. I'm very torn. I don't like to overturn a commission's decision when it's based on reasonable criteria. My vote doesn't matter at this point anyway, because it's going to be overturned. I think HPC was in a very difficult position here and they were really doing the best they could of trying to retain something that was there. The coyote issue to me is a non-issue. I feel like if you can make it to that gate, you can make it the six more feet or whatever it is to the front door. I don't quite get it. Coyotes are something we have to deal with, difficult. I mean, I got a very large dog. I wouldn't get a small dog in our neighborhood. But you have a small dog, so sticks, rocks, all of those things work. You're not always going to be able to run somewhere. Careful with the small dogs. Never turn your back. When my dog was a puppy, I almost lost him. They are so fast, those coyotes, and they're so much smarter than we are. Certainly smarter than dogs and cats, who are absolutely defenseless. I also think in terms of policy that we need to look at penalties for projects that are done that make contributors non-contributors in districts. I don't think what we have in place just for the general public who's in a nonhistoric neighborhood that does an alteration that has to go to DRB is sufficient, because they're not affecting SEQA, they're not affecting a historic resource. Again, it doesn't affect them. I'm not going to argue with Jay over whether or not the house was a contributor then or is still a contributor. But I think in general, if we run into a situation in the future where a house that is clearly a contributor is clearly made a non-contributor, I don't want to be sitting here saying, "Well, what can we do about it?" We should know, and the public should know, they should have advance warning. If you take a contributor, either something that's on the register or something that's a contributor, and you alter it and make it to where it's no longer a contributor, you're going to face some kind of a penalty. We don't have that set up now. We do have the administrative citation, but it's not really set up for this purpose. I'd like to bring back a policy discussion about this. Make it very clear so that people who live in the districts know what will happen to them. Because I, you know, without having that warning or that set up in advance, people are going to say, "Well, it's not fair. They didn't know." We need to know. So that's another thing that I would, something I would like to bring back for us as a discussion about what happens. Because I do think that you do start running into potential SEQA violations. What's the tipping point? How many people are you going to allow? Do you use that administrative citation and whatever new penalty we come up with as a disincentive to get people to go through the proper process?
So on the sale of a house, the realtor would notify the individual buying the house that you're in a contributory or...
I think we should notify them. As much as I, we have a lot of great realtors who would do it, not all realtors would. The city, when a house changes hands, should notify the residents. There should be a welcome basket of a brochure, a brochure that looks like a welcome basket. We should notify them. But we should also notify all the people that are in districts now, because we don't have that policy now. And people, I don't think they've ever been formally notified about what the rules are, you know, on an individual basis. So I think we need to do that.
Let the staff bring it back. I'd like to know how...
Absolutely.
Details of how we know.
Thank you. I would like staff to bring that back. So those are my thoughts. I think, again, I don't know that it's worth the brain damage in this over a 22-inch change in this fence. But I am hoping that some policy can come out of this that will prevent us from being in this situation again in the future.
Okay. And my vote is for it, but I'm not being influenced, the fact that the guy that originally built the house and lived there was an engineer. I didn't let that influence me. As an inside joke around here about me. Okay, is there... It fell flat, I know. Most of my jokes do. That's a motion.
Two, moving. Continue the matter for two weeks in order to draft findings, overturning the Historic Preservation Commission's decision.
Okay, is there a second? Is there a second?
You can pass the gavel.
You can pass the gavel and second it.
Here. It's over there. Second. Rock call.
Councilmembers, Friedman?
I'm going to abstain, because I just think this is, you know, I think, I'm oriented in the future policy in this, so at this point.
Okay, continue.
Najarian?
Can our colleagues come and vote?
They can, only if they watch it and watch the whole tape and we'll review the staff report and then participate.
Yes.
Quintero. Lee Arsonanian. Air Pro Tem Weaver.
Aye. Okay, in two weeks, it'll be back for the approval of the reversal of the...
Motion overturning the HPC's decision.
Okay.
In part.
Okay, what is next? Thanks for all coming.
Next is oral communication. Discussion is limited in time. It's not part of this agenda. Speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to this speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. City manager, mayor, further matter to the appropriate department for investigation
I don't have any cards.
There are no cards then.
We just said history.
Will you adjourn?
Second.
In the memory of John Davidous.